Aside, we will go ahead and begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings with a salute to our country's flag. I'm going to ask my distinguished colleague from the 2nd District if he would lead us in the pledge this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our first order of business this morning is to choose a chair person for 2020. And so with that, the nominations are open.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Supervisor Bonnie Gore for chair.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay. We have a motion, Wygant, Second Gustafson, to install Supervisor Gore as the chair for 2020. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's good. All right.
Think I have to move the chair up a little bit. All right. Thank you, everyone. And let me get my agenda here. And the next item of business is we are going to select our vice chair. So do I have nominations or a vice chair?
Nominate Supervisor Wygant.
All right. And we have a second vice supervisor, Holmes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I don't think anybody is opposed, so the motion carries. So congratulations Supervisor Wygant. When I need to step away, it's all yours. All right. Before we move on, I first want to say thank you to Supervisor Euler for leading us in 2019. It was quite a year in 2019, and I just want to share a couple of things that our board accomplished under his leadership. We actually added two new supervisors, which meant a little extra work for our colleagues. We put together a short-term rental ordinance for Lake Tahoe, very significant. We approved the Sunset Industrial and Placer Ranch Plan after many, many years. Thank you for driving that home Supervisor Euler. We had several workshops. We had a budget workshop. We had strategic planning workshops, capital facilities workshops, and we also established an affordable housing trust. So in addition to all the other work that we have done this last year, thank you very much for your leadership Supervisor Euler. We really appreciate it. And any of my colleagues want to make any other comments?
No.
It's open season.
Yeah. It's open season.
All right.
Well, I was just going to comment for those of you.
Do it. Thank you. He can turn it off easily, too, and Bonnie can. For those of you, I'm the newest, obviously, but I have so enjoyed the humor and the quickness that comes out of this. Sometimes I'm embarrassed by it a bit, I will say, but it does help us be a little more human to those of you sitting in the audience and enjoying your time out there while you're waiting for us as well. So especially given the seriousness of the issues we deal with, you find a way to make it a more relaxing environment, and I really appreciated that. Thank you. Great. And Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, I concur with that Supervisor Gustafson. Kirk, you've kept us entertained. I'll say that. And as I often say about your leadership, if we point you in the right direction, you may give it. So thank you for this past year of your chairmanship and leadership.
Supervisor Wygant?
Say, Cindy, after all these years and as old as I am, Kirk doesn't embarrass me anymore. Firstly, Kirk, we've been at this for a while together, and you actually run a very efficient meeting, and you do bring humor to it, but you also have a strong degree of leadership, and I have a great respect for that, and it helps tremendously, particularly on the big meetings with the tough issues. So thanks.
Thank you. A rebuttal, if I may, Madam Chair.
Here, please.
Robert and I have had the pleasure of working with a number of differently constituted boards over the years, and it's my humble opinion that this is perhaps the strongest board I've had the pleasure of working with. This is an incredible assembly of people with diverse backgrounds and strong opinions, but each one of my colleagues, I believe, is doing what they believe is in the best long-term interest of Placer County. I believe that each of my colleagues has, though we all have our own personal proclivities, I believe that each and every one of you acts on a daily basis in your capacity as supervisor, not in what would be described as your self-interest, but what you truly believe to be. And we have honest disagreements from time to time as to what that is and what that vision should be, but it's always expressed professionally with respect. And so I want to thank you, each of you, for making my job as chair very easy last year. Thank you.
Well, thank you Supervisor Euler. And with that, I have a plaque to give you, so if you would come join me.
Oh, wonderful.
We're going to come stand next to the really pretty seal and...
Can you shoot from back there? You're good, or?
So first of all, thank you again, and we'll hand that to you.
One, two, three, and one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, before we move into the rest of our agenda, I am going to ask Pastor Francis Infuso to come on up. And as we start a new year and a new decade, I thought it appropriate to start with a prayer. Pastor Francis served as my pastor for a number of years, and he is really a pastor to pastors in the greater Sacramento region. And so Pastor Francis, you would come up, and if you would all join us in a word of prayer.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. We've already acknowledged that we are under God in our pledge, and so why don't we pray to Him? Heavenly Father, we thank you that you have given us life and breath and every good thing. We thank you that our responsibilities come from you. You said in your word if any of us lack wisdom, and we all do, that we should ask you for your help, and you'll give it to us. So that's what we're doing today. We're asking you for your wisdom, not as a formality, but with a clear understanding that we can't do what we need to do without your help. When you say without me you can do nothing, nothing of real value, we believe you, and so we put our hope in you. Keep us fully conscious of who you are and that our talents and abilities and all good gifts come from you. Help us to think of others before ourselves, to speak words that are kind and caring. We are far better together than apart. Help us to be for one another and never against one another. Help us to treat each other with the same respect we want to receive, to honor each other as co-laborers, serving the community we live in and love. We're honored to be here as public servants, asking for your help, not just for today, but for every day to come. We ask these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. With that, we are going to move on to the consent agenda, and I'm going to have the clerk read the procedures.
Thank you. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by County Council and the Executive Department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. The Board will convene as the Placer County Successor Agency for Items 24A and 24B. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the Board taking action, and the item may be moved for discussion.
Thank you. Do we have any items that any of Board members want to remove?
I have none.
And anyone from the public like to move an item from the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none. We have an approval from Supervisor Holmes, second from Supervisor Wygant, and roll call, please. Wygant?
Yep.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Gore? Yes. Thank you. We will now move on to public comment, and I want to ask first, I know there are a number of people who would like to talk about an item on the closed session agenda, which is appropriate. However, if we have people who want to speak about an item not on our agenda that does not have to do with an appointment process, I would like to ask those people to come up first, and then we will discuss the, for those who want to discuss, the item on the closed session agenda. We are going to be discussing as a board during closed session the process and not individuals during our closed session time together. After that, after our closed session, we will come back and report back out what the Board has decided as far as our process to appoint a new district attorney. So I just want to make sure you're all aware of that. And with that, we'll move forward to public comment, and for those folks who'd like to make a comment, please come on up and introduce yourself.
Well, I have a very distinguished audience today.
Good morning.
Good morning. Happy New Year to you all. My name is Nancy Jo Rixey, and I've been here before. I'm here to talk about the permit revocation that just came through and all of the things that were written about it, and I was very surprised at its findings. I also had, I wasn't even distributed it, and I've been two and a half years on this, as you guys know, okay? I was surprised at the decision because the 152-page document does not talk anything about the removal of the top portion of the wall, nor were any of the presentations at the meeting. They were all based on sound transmission and noise reverberation, so I'm really surprised at that. By the removal of that top portion, I am now going to get more reverberation from that. It didn't do anything for me, really, except for reduce some of it. But now I'm going to be, once again, seven days a week, 32 to 40 hours a week, exposed to this type of noise and transmission, and that's for 11 months out of the year. We're now going into the season where the trap clubs are all going to be coming out, and so the time, and it's going to increase, and as you know, this is during happy hours, family happy hours. This is time when people are coming home from work, their stressful jobs. I also, on page 154, on the 154 document, it states clearly on page, I think it's on page five, that it states clearly on the revocation that state or federal law which affects the health, safety, peace, morals, or general welfare of the public. That's me, okay? That's the people that are being exposed to it. I'm on the east side. The people that have been exposed to have only been exposed to it for six months. I've been exposed to it for two and a half years. Two and a half years. I don't think it's right. I think this decision of taking the top portion of the wall off is another closed-door decision made by your staff. Your staff does not communicate. This shouldn't have happened. This should have been dealt with two and a half years ago. It's only gotten worse. I don't understand it. I really don't. Also, the Saxby letter, which is a joke, which is your sound consultant that you hired, dated October 28th, references that the trap club noise doesn't pose a risk to public health, according to the EPA. This is referenced in an article from 1974. This is 2020. That's 48 years. We all know that this type of rapid action, I'm going to quit now because you will see me again until this is done, but my bottom line is, the thought the revocation hearing was addressing was the sound reverberation, and how did you let this situation get out of hand?
Thank you for sharing your comments. We appreciate it. Would anybody else like to address an item not on the closed session agenda? All right. With that, we'll continue public comment. Anybody else want to make a comment? All right. And you're welcome to sort of line yourselves up if you'd like as well. That's fine. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the Board, my name is Jennifer Miskowitz, and I am an Assistant District Attorney for the Placer County District Attorney's Office. There are many of us that are here today on our personal time in support of Jeff Wilson's appointment to District Attorney, and we have made a collective decision that I will speak for the group in an effort to avoid duplicative statements and to save time for the Board to engage in other business. I am also speaking today on behalf of many of the men and women from our office who could not take personal time to be here today due to obligations back at the office. The appointment of our acting District Attorney, Jeff Wilson, is one that is right for our office and our community. Jeff is a creative thinker and has been absolutely vital to the core functions of our office for the past 10 years, and there is no one that knows the daily functions of each unit and the staff that make up that unit better than Jeff. Jeff is also a skilled prosecutor. Jeff somehow manages to run the office, and he tries some of our most complex homicide cases. What is most important is that Jeff is always willing to share those skills with others and acts as an amazing mentor. The appointment of Jeff Wilson comes at a very important time for our office. Our office has many new tasks and goals in the next, in the months to come. A yearly task and one that requires great insight and institutional knowledge is our budget. Jeff has been instrumental in ensuring that we always remain within our budget over the years and that we find creative ways of supplementing the budget and grants and programs. Jeff is a fiscal conservative that can lead us in the months to come as we prepare for another year of efficiently serving justice within the parameters of a sound budget. In the next several months, our office will also be implementing a new computer database. It was Jeff's vision that we move towards a paperless system, and that vision is now coming to fruition. Jeff has worked diligently with our staff, the county, and the Placer County Superior Court to ensure that the transition is a seamless one. As with any organization, we of course have daily needs that require great leadership. This often requires the management of people, as our organization only thrives because of the great work of our prosecutors, investigators, victim advocates, and support staff. Jeff is not afraid to put the right people in the right positions and always does so for the right reasons. Jeff has been attacked for some of those decisions by a very small group of people that lack the ability to self-reflect on their own shortcomings, but instead feel compelled to make erroneous attacks on his character. For those of us that know Jeff and have worked with him over the years, we can only describe these attacks as blatantly false and disgusting. Opening up the appointment of this position will only serve to continue to foster these false attacks and create fear and uncertainty of what future leadership will undoubtedly bring. In closing, I know that the Board has received numerous letters in support of Jeff, and I want you to know that that is the voice of the Placer County District Attorney's Office and our allied partners. I encourage the Board to not unwind the intent of Placer County voters when they voiced their continued support under the direction of Scott Owens at the most recent election. Jeff Wilson has been the crux of our organization, and to appoint anyone different will forever impact the quality of the people leading our office and the quality of service to our community. Please stand with me for all of us that are here today to show your support of Jeff Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments, and thank you all for being here. Anyone else like to speak?
Good morning, Honorable Placer County Supervisors. My name is Carrie Quinnlog, and I've been a resident of Placer County for 17 years. I'm joined here today with other concerned Placer County residents that are of the understanding that you could be possibly voting to fill the recently vacated position of the District Attorney without considering other potentially qualified applicants. If that is the case, then we are merely here to urge you to consider other outside applicants for the sake of the future of Placer County and also out of obligation to your constituents. I would like to submit some signed letters for record. And I would like to thank you for your time, for your service, and for your consideration.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good morning. Jason Farron, Placer County Deputy Sheriff's Association. I want to take a moment to speak about the vacancy left by the retirement of Scott Owens. As with any opening in any department head position, it's one that should be a cause for heavy deliberation. This position has a direct effect on the public trust, a significant impact on the community. Because of this, the DSA hopes for an open and transparent application and vetting process for those who meet the requirements of the District Attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You're welcome to come on up. Yes, sir.
My name's Joe McInerney. I work at the Placer County DA's office. I've been there 20 years as a DA. One letter you didn't receive was a letter from the Deputy District Attorney's Office supporting Mr. Wilson. Mr. Owens, I don't know if he's made it here today or not, claimed that there was overwhelming support in the Deputy District Attorney's Office for Mr. Wilson. That's not the case. Forty percent of the people that voted did not vote to support him. That's why you didn't get a letter in support of Mr. Wilson. It's my belief that, one, I just happened to hear some of the comments made just previously, not a single Placer County resident voted for Mr. Wilson for office, for District Attorney. So to claim that you must put him in Mr. Owens' stead when Mr. Owens quit barely a year into this term and give Mr. Wilson two and a half years to consolidate his power and his way of doing things within the office would be a dereliction of your duty, in my opinion. I believe that the Board should have an open, transparent process and evaluate, and if Mr. Owens, in your good judgment, is the best candidate, so be it. That's fine. But why the rush to judgment? Why to go, I honestly, I maybe should, I'm a lawyer, but I don't understand the process you're going to proceed under. And if it's possible that you're going to go into a room and come out and say, we've appointed Mr. Wilson, that is the epitome of a back-room deal that the voters of this county should not be subjected to. They should be educated. They should be, you should be educated about our office and about how things really run there and how people, I won't be able to say, will those that are in support of an open process stand up? Because those people would be retaliated against, in my opinion. And it's not a few minor people who is 40% of the office. And really, you know, how happy are the DA's in the office? That's not your big role, right? Your big role is, how's the DA's office running? And how would it run under this man? And that's what I think you should spend the time, evaluate it, and evaluate other candidates. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And to clarify...
Good question, Madam Chair, if I may, for counsel. Just so that folks understand, we have not agendized an appointment today. That is correct. And that when we've made these appointments in the past, and this will be the sixth such appointment that we've made, at least in my time that I've been here, when we've made these appointments in the past, they've always been agendized, open to the public, public comment taken, and then the Board takes action in a public setting. That's correct. And that is the plan for this position as well. Exactly right. The only thing discussed in closed session today is simply the process. Thank you. Any appointment will be on open session. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments for the Board?
Good morning. My name is Nina Slarno Besselman. I am an attorney in town. I'm a former prosecutor for Placer County. I'm currently a prosecutor for Orange County. I also am the president of Crime Victims United, which is the only public safety crime victims advocacy group in California and through the nation. I'm also a local business owner, so I wear several hats. I'm not here to bash anyone or say anything negative. What I am here to do is ask you to not be complacent and to open up the process to both internal and external applicants. I think sometimes change is good. Placer County is unique. Placer County District Attorney's Office should be a leader in public safety throughout the state of California. It should be beholden to our victims of crime. It should be partners with law enforcement. And as somebody who works in this community, that's not something I've seen of late. And I would ask the Board, instead of just appointing the next in line, and it may be that you end up appointing him, give people the opportunity to apply, because there may be a candidate within the office, a candidate from outside the office, that could actually bring some different type of leadership, bring some change that I think would truly benefit this community. And my simple request is that we not just roll with the next person in line without hearing from everybody else and the potential candidates. So thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a comment before we close public session?
Thank you, Chair Gore. My name is David Brody. I'm a senior deputy district attorney here in Placer County. I've been here, and Mr. Euler, I've been here since 1995, working steadily as a prosecutor in this office. I have also submitted my name and will continue through whatever application process that the Board establishes to submit my name and seek the appointment for District Attorney in this county. I do want to emphasize, one of the critical things that is dramatically lacking from this office under this administration is the collaboration that is so essential in this county. I've worked here long enough and had enough different roles and achieved enough different goals to see that Placer County is, I think, unique in the state of California. We are both small enough to have good relationships between our leaders and our agencies, and we are large enough that we have the resources to meet our goals and to achieve amazing ends. This is not occurring with the District Attorney's Office currently. The DA's office is essentially a black hole that is not working collaboratively with the rest of the county. The DA's office is in a unique position. It is kind of almost the centerpiece on so many important, local, governmental, regional, and even potentially statewide, issues. This DA's office should be a leader both locally and statewide. As you're aware right now, with a lot of the things going on in the state of California, there's a great deal of change, particularly as regards criminal justice issues in the state of California. Everything that I, everybody I've talked to has indicated this office is inactive in that role. This office has not taken positions. It is not engaged at all, and that is a significant problem. So I do ask that the Board opens up the process for applications from both people within the office as well as people outside the office. I'm aware of numerous candidates who have at least an interest. We'll see whether or not they apply, and I think it would greatly improve the county to have some changes in this office. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Thank you all. We will close public comment, and we probably don't have Lake Tahoe. Do we have Lake Tahoe before I close public comment?
Give us a moment, and we'll see. We can, I think, move forward, and if we realize that there's anyone there after the fact, we can take it again.
All right. So we'll close public comment for now. If we have anybody in Tahoe, after we do Board member and executive reports, we will do that. All right. Terrific. Let's see. Do we have any executive reports? I think, Todd, I'd like to ask you just to give us an update on the situation with the wall at the trap club.
Yeah. So just a current, kind of recap of what's the status. Back on December 19th, there was a hearing for a revocation of, based on the zoning administrator determination, for the trap club and the actual revocation of that screen and order removal of the non-conforming portion of the shot screen structure within its entirety within 90 days. That determination was made by the zoning administrator. However, there has been an appeal from the trap club for that, and that appeal will be brought forward to the Board in April of this year. So that's the current status of where we're at, but there has been a determination about that revocation.
And we have to wait until April?
I believe so. Yes.
If we can move that up sooner, I would really appreciate that.
We will.
I know we're not supposed to make direction from here, so, anyway, that's my comment. And do we have any other comments from Board members? Let's see. Cindy?
Thank you. First off, Lindsay says there's no one in the Tahoe office for public comment, so just double-check. I just wanted to let the Board know, if you haven't already heard, that with the pilot program for free transit in Tahoe, it's been hugely successful in the two weeks, three weeks, 21 days, over the holidays, increases overall, we're up 21, or 12%, overall. The West Shore route, only 16%, but the North Shore route, which is where most of our ridership is... North Shore route, which is where most of our ridership is, up 25 percent. So, as we predicted, making transit free, next step is more frequent. It is resulting in vehicles being off the road and people having a more convenient way to get to the ski areas and to work. So, really appreciate the support of the Board and wanted to give you that. I'm sure we'll get many more updates, but great news. I was at a meeting yesterday and asked to get that update. So... And then, second thing is, I wanted to thank Supervisor Gore, Chairman Gore, for arranging a meeting with the BLM. I'll let you report on that, but I really appreciated being included in that meeting with Congressman McClintock's office.
Anyone else? All right. I did want to give an update on the meeting that we held with the BLM. Supervisor Gustafson, myself, Todd, Ken Graham, and Alice Atherton from the Public Works Department, and Brett Story. We met with Elizabeth Mayer Shields, and she's the field manager of BLM. And Congressman McClintock's office coordinated that meeting. But it was a terrific opportunity to speak with the BLM, especially after conversations of the challenges we've had as a county, dealing with forest management and not having access to BLM lands, or having to cost money to actually take out dead trees on BLM land. So, it was terrific to have that meeting. She was very positive about ways that we can work together with them to address some of the challenges we have with forest health. And we're going to, they are going to have a focused meeting on areas of the county's high priorities, how they intersect with BLM land, and also look at entering into an agreement, whether that's a master stewardship agreement or a good neighbor agreement. But a terrific meeting, so I appreciate our staff in coordinating that with Congressman's office. And hopefully, we can have a better working relationship with BLM as we try to address some of these forest management issues. All right. Let us go ahead on to our first timed item, which is the 9:15, the presentation of the county flag. And I am going to pass that over to Supervisor Holmes to talk a little bit about our flag.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was approached early last year about our county flag that we had. A lot of people didn't know we had one, but it was brought to my attention that they would like to see kind of a refreshed flag, something that was a 21st century flag. We've had a lot of changes with our logo and our departments that have did that logo and outreach. And so, I asked the Board if we could take a look at a new county flag. And with their wisdom, they gave their input. I have to say that Landon Wolf was instrumental. He very respectfully, when I put the first, my vision of the flag out, he said, very respectfully, he said, "Well, why don't we look at something like this?" And so, being wise, and he's a young millennial, I suppose, but anyhow, I thought we'll incorporate his ideas in the flag. So, really look forward to presenting this this morning. I happen to have it here. And if the Chair will join me down at the lecture, we will unveil it.
We will unveil it. And then after we unveil it, we will ask the rest of our colleagues to join us. But we'll do that part first. You're not supposed to tell people that. I think that's correct. Nope. We already did incorrectly. There we go. There we go. On our new flag.
Johnny Seal, the mountains of the Sierra, and 1851. And what do those stars represent? Does anybody know what those stars represent?
Cities.
Yes. They represent the cities. And if you're interested, since Auburn starts with an A, this is Auburn. Figure out the rest on the way down. If you know which cities you're in. What do you think, everybody?
Come join us. We'll take a photo.
You probably don't remember what the other flag was.
I think Robert needs to be off to the side.
No, come on in. Here we go. That's terrible.
Such a funny guy.
I want to watch you fold it back up. Oh, yeah, that's not happening. No. Come on, fold it back up. Oh, I'm giving it back to Wendy to put it together.
Yep.
I'm not folding it. All right. Thank you, Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you.
And Landon, thank you very much for the new design. It looks terrific. I can take a little bit of pride in that, since Landon works for me. Something to be said about hiring good millennials, that's for sure. All right. Before we move on to our next agenda item, I did want to share with you a little bit of a change in our Board procedures. And so, what I'm going to do in the future is, for my colleagues, I will introduce an item. After we discuss the item, I will bring it back to the Board to allow the clerk to read the motion, so that the Chair is not reading the motion. And then, she'll read the motion that we're going to take action on. And then, I'll let one of you to affirm the motion and then second the motion. So we'll just change those procedures a little bit.
Can Megan speak as quickly as Kirk did?
Probably not as quickly, but that way I don't have to say it all. I won't get dry mouth. All right. So let's move on to the 9:25 timed item. And it's our Sheriff's Presentation of the Placer Regional Auto Theft Task Force and their annual report. Gentlemen.
Good morning, members of the Board. Congratulations, Madam Chair Gore, Vice Chair Weigant. I'm Captain Swearingen with the Placer-
Yeah. His life is much easier now.
You're relieved, right? I'm Captain Swearingen with the Placer County Sheriff's Office. And I'm here to introduce California Highway Patrol Sergeant Eric Granrude, who's going to present the annual report for the Placer Regional Auto Theft Task Force, made up of various detectives representing agencies in Placer County. And with that, I will turn it over to the Sergeant.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Sergeant Eric Granrude, currently assigned to Placer County Auto Theft, Regional Auto Theft Task Force. I'm new to the task force. I took over in December of 2018. And I was, previous to that, I was four years with Sacramento County Auto Theft Task Force. So, we compiled a quick PowerPoint for the Council to take a look at. Regional Auto Theft Task Force, AKA Radif, is structured on personnel. We are commanded by a CHP ISU Lieutenant. I'm the supervising sergeant. We have one CHP investigator, Placer County Sheriff's Department detective, Roseville Police detective, as well as Rockland Police detective. And Radif's mission, mission of Radif, to reduce vehicle theft-related crimes within Placer County through aggressive, innovative, as well as proactive enforcement measures. Our objectives, of course, are to decrease vehicle theft, increase our recovery rate, decrease auto theft-related crimes, as well as increase clearance rate of vehicle theft cases throughout the county. Day-to-day operations consist of, we're to accomplish missions of objectives through various means, utilizing a GPS tracking, LoJack, local LPR access and databases, use of informants, if they last long enough, patrol information, as well as dispatch undercover operations and bait car operations throughout the county. Also, we provide extensive education and instruction to allied agencies. Several of my task force members teach at the 40-hour, peace officer-standardized vehicle theft course for officers or future detectives for the state of California and local municipalities. We also instruct at citizens academies, volunteer academies. And we cover local auto theft today. We discuss auto theft today. It's in a nice, informal capacity. Current trends, we discuss fraud purchases, identity theft, and it's not so much the carjacking of the old days, like where 15 years ago, where it's all carjackings and get out of your cars and stuff. Now, it's more of a, like a white-collar type crime, trying to be innovative with their means and getting vehicles, rental fraud and purchases. We talk about vehicle safety and securment with the local neighborhood watch groups on how to secure your car, not leave any valuables in the vehicles, of course, and just not to make your vehicle a potential victim and then yourself. We talk about purchase/sales of private party vehicles, you know, some of the websites to stay off of. And if it's too good to be true, you know, stay away, you know. We don't want any innocent purchases out there of something that might be fraudulent in nature or theft. Of course, vehicle burglaries, you know, you hear probably a lot of the impact of vehicle burglaries, local and at the local malls. And we discuss the deterrence of that and exposure and component, component and part theft. Next slide, you probably ask, wonder how we compile all these stats. All my detectives and investigators compile stats on the CHP 136. As you can see, it says, "Vehicle Theft Personnel Activity." Just going down the line, we discuss investigations, investigation assists, arrests. That's Program 30 arrests is the vehicle theft arrests. Other arrests are any arrests, side outs, warrant arrests, any other felony arrests that may come about while we are working vehicle theft crimes. They discuss, it's, we tally, arrested assists, complaints filed, arrest warrants, search warrants, parole searches, probation searches, businesses inspected, recoveries, recovery assist, any training provided throughout the month, as well as team assists. I take pride mostly in the team assist, just being able and available on the phone. We don't necessarily go out to every call, but we can triage the call if it's a necessary call-out or help local agencies or any questions, whether it's a DMV question or private individual or someone working patrol. This is compiled stats. This is what I provide all the participating agencies, as well as my department. As you can see, it's highlighted. It shows that in 2017, this is the current MOU, three-year agreement. We had 48 arrests, 92 recoveries, and $925,000 in estimated value recovered. The following year, we had a total of 61. Forty-three of those were Program 30, 136 recoveries, and over $2 million in estimated value. And then, over 2019 calendar year, we're at 87 arrests, 183 recoveries, and over $3 million in estimated. So, we're, we've been branching out a little bit. And I was able to, with the help of my computer whiz, we made a graph. It kind of shows the last three years of, you can see how we've been more aggressive in our combating vehicle theft. In case you didn't know, the next slide, CHP is the keeper of all, California Highway Patrol, sorry, is the keeper of all theft stats because of the money that comes to vehicle, the registration fees. So, in 2017, we had a total of 713 thefts, vehicle thefts in Placer County. And to the right is injur, outjur, and other jur. As you noticed, that within jurisdiction, that's stolen and recovered in Placer County. And then, outjur is out of jurisdiction. That's stolen out of our county, but recovered by a local municipality or the Sheriff's Department. And then, other jur, that's stolen in our county that ends up outside of our county. So, we have a lot that ends up outside of our county. So, we had another decline in 2018. We are at 690 thefts for the year and 75 percent recovery rate. And then, this last calendar year, this 2019, we're at 667 and 80 percent recovery rate. So, it's starting, it's going down. That's what you want. You don't want to see the uptick. That's, Sac County's on the uptick, as well as like San Joaquin County and some of those. The next slide, I create this Radif Monthly. It's kind of a glorified newspaper. We discuss some of our current cases, any big cases that the detectives, kind of give them credit for what they did for a great month or what they're currently doing. And then, this is disseminated to all Captain Swearingen, his management staff, they like to, they like to see that stuff. So, when they have their inter-agency meetings and discuss what the task force is doing. So, it kind of is titled with investigations. And it kind of shows that we opened what investigations, how many new, how many arrests, who we kind of assisted, whether it was other task force, you know, other CHP, and kind of gives that. And then we got the year-to-date stats that we keep up, prior year, what personnel we have on the task force, and then any assists. And so, I just will put this, and then, of course, it'll have pictures of nice cars or any commercial, commercial equipment that we recover, stolen from any properties. And then, the next and final page is, this is disseminated to all the patrol, patrol units and/or personnel, law enforcement personnel and dispatchers. It's kind of a decision tree, so they know kind of how to work their way through it, whether to call us, not call us. And so, just so we have good, open communications among the agencies within Placer County. And other than that, the current task force personnel are great. It's nice to have a really, Placer County, which is very cooperative and very structured for the vehicle theft. And it's very nice to be part of. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Any questions, concerns?
Great. Thank you very much for the update. Great work. Any questions from the Board? All right. Supervisor Holmes, you have to practice looking at the little red dots.
That's all right. Thank you. Thanks. It looks like this has been a very successful program since we started that in 2007. So, I want to thank you and the team for the work on this. I noticed one of the things on your screen was the burglaries, auto burglaries. I'm assuming these are broken windows that people get in. Do you investigate those, or does the Sheriff's Department or the CHP?
Well, it's usually the local agency in charge. But with vehicle theft, you usually have your auto burgs. It's, you know, it's a crime of opportunity. And usually, there are means of transportation, whether if it's not local transportation, it's probably be a stolen vehicle or some other issue. So, and we've come, a lot of our personnel, I've been fortunate enough that we've had a database collected because of my experience with Sac County. And a lot of the players we've arrested are actually from Sac County that come up and decide to do their criminal activity within our county and then bring it back to the county. So, we work in conjunction with Sac County, the Auto Theft Task Force, a lot to try to-
There's been a couple instances where the car dealers have had broken windows. Is that something that the local jurisdiction would look at, or does your-
Usually, we're involved with that. They'll take the initial report, and it gets usually forwarded to the respective agency that took the, whoever my detective is for that department. And then, we work together with, hopefully, there's some video or surveillance-type stuff that can lead us. And we've been pretty fortunate with just, if we get a good picture, to share it amongst the local agencies, as well as the surrounding counties. And someone can ID and kind of point us in the right direction. So, we've been lucky with that.
Okay. Thank you for your report. Appreciate it.
Very well.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We will move on to our 9:35 timed item. This is the Community Development Resources Agency Public Road Name Change from Pear Drive to Precision Place.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Ben Bardox, Senior Surveyor, Deputy County Surveyor-
Good morning, Madam Chair, Ben Bardockson, Senior Surveyor, Deputy County Surveyor, we're joined by County Surveyor Leslie Amstegre, and Addressing Specialist Lindsay DeRipertis. And today we're talking about the application we received for changing the name of a public road from Pear Drive to Precision Place. As a bit of a background, in July 2019, Addressing Services received an application for a road name change. The application was deemed appropriate as coming from an owner on that route. Addressing vetted the proposed name with first responders, namely the fire, sheriff, post office. And finding no conflict, Addressing Services proceeded to ballot the parcels fronting on or addressed off Pear Drive. This slide shows a map of the area, you can see Highway forty-nine in yellow, and Kemper Road running east-west on the north side of Pear Drive, and it shows the seven parcels that were balloted to receive input on the proposed name change. So the effective changes of this road name change were the seven parcels were being affected, three of those parcels would change their road name, the four of those parcels would utilize the new name when they became addressed. The total cost to the county is two hundred dollars for each of the, for the total of two signs being installed on the public portion at Kemper and Precision, and Precision and Kemper Oaks Court. This slide shows the implementation, if approved by your board. The first step we'll do is send letters to the owners on the route informing them of the approval of the name change, we'll indicate an effective date of that name change, approximately thirty days out, we'll notify the first responders of when that effective change will become in place, we'll update our county permanent system, GIS, and CDR's permanent system, and perform the field services to change the road name signs at those two locations. Through this process, the public has had the opportunity to observe the application and the hearing process. First was a presentation to the North Auburn MAC, November twelfth, and they recommended seven to zero to approve to the planning commission. On December twelfth, we made the presentation to the planning commission, and they recommended to approve to the board. And with that, we're asking your action to adopt a resolution authorizing the Deputy Director of Engineering and Surveying to rename the road from Pear Drive to Precision Place, and make a finding and exemption pursuant to SECA Guidelines Sections fifteen oh six one B three. And with that, that concludes my presentation, I'm hoping for questions.
Great, thank you, Supervisor Holmes.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I presume that Pear, Pear Drive, soon to be Precision Place, was because of the construction of Vian Enterprises' Pear Drive? And was there any access coming in from industrial, coming into that area, or was that not an option for the developer?
So, that's correct, Vian was, is the applicant, and there is no access from the industrials, industrial road, industrial side, east of the site. The parcel where the project is built on has always had access via Pear Drive.
And so the owner of the complex out there, was it, is it the industrial, is that the name of the?
Yeah, I don't know exactly the name of the complex, but I think it's Industrial Way.
Yeah, and so, but they wouldn't allow access through their property to go on to this new building, is that?
Correct, I understand the, the grade change topography was limiting from, connecting from that road to, along the south to, to this parcel.
Okay, well, thank you very much, the board will have to hear some history, and I'm saddened to see that name changed from Pear because I knew the Fenini family, and they actually grew pears up until probably nineteen seventy-five, and this forty acre ranch out there, that's still out there, but it's not, I've been out there a couple of times lately, and there's no, not much agricultural on it, so. While it saddens me to see the name go because it has a meaning for me, knowing the family, and I'm good friends with John and Pam Fenini, who are descendants of the Fenini, and they're still involved in agriculture out in the Lincoln area. So anyhow, I just needed to let the board know that I, that kind of, there's part of me that hates to see that name go. Thank you, I understand.
All right, I see no other comments, I'd like to open this up to the public, so if anybody would like to come and speak on this item, you're welcome to do so. I'm limiting to your comments to about three minutes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. My name is Karen Nichols, I'm a resident in Auburn, I'm attended here today by Bob Miller and John Leham, who are supporting, in addition, I have a petition from the Pear Drive, off of Pear Drive, the Kemper Oaks Association, asking for some consideration in regard to an issue that's raised up from the name change. Working in a great way, in a collaborative way, in Placer County is amazing. From acreage and agricultural land to small towns and cities, all the streets, drives, avenues, courts that we have that compromise our micro and macro communities, there's one thing that matters to everybody, a sense of having a place to work from, to live from, relax, to be renewed in. Thank you for doing what you and others do in support of that, daily. It is in that spirit of community that Kemper Oaks residents gathered, and Vian Enterprise worked together to work out a solution to mitigate the degree of fallout from a whole series of developmental, development steps that have been taken along Pear, which is at the very cusp of what is residential and industrial, which is rare in Auburn, that they would, you would actually have neighbors that are industrial with a residential right next to it. Picture Highway forty-nine and a residence right on Highway forty-nine. You just get that feeling that there aren't many places like that, and we happen to be one. And Placer County maintains the egress and access for our Kemper Oaks community, as well as two back driveways from the industrial park that was mentioned earlier that Superintendent Holmes asked about. It has been an area that, because we worked with Vian, they have agreed on private property to go ahead and place a yield sign. Because, understand this, to this point, and there was a concurrence of all the neighbors, we, I walk door to door and ask for input and experience, and as we exit Kemper Oaks Court with a limited visibility to the right-hand side, we have always been very careful about leaving our court because it isn't safe. With all the egress in what is a very short stretch of county road, we have things entering there that are at cross-purpose, residential, industrial, rushing off to lunch, coming back to get back in time, leaving for work excited to be home. I want you to know that in the spirit of cooperation, we've stepped out as neighbors and reached out to Vian, our neighbors. We will not argue about the name change, but what we would ask the supervisors to consider is that you would, you help generate another look at that corner. Imagine if we're having a conflict now getting out of our street safely, imagine a hundred forty employees coming to work, leaving from work, rushing out to do that, that appointment that they had, or that errand that they had to run down to the Walgreens at the corner. Imagine us trying to leave our block at the end of a workday on the little Pear Drive that used to be a pear orchard and still feels like it. I ask for your consideration to get those engineers back out there, people that mark roads, that have the experience that we don't have, and take another look at that wonderful little section of county road where so much happens. Thank you for your consideration, I appreciate the time, and I know that our neighbors do too, Vian also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes ma'am.
I'm Elizabeth Vian, this is my brother Scott Vian.
Lordy, all.
We're the, the owners of the industrial building going in on, precision place is our hope. We currently occupy five buildings on Industrial Drive in the Kemper Industrial Park. It was not an option to go through that private park, it is non-county roads, non-county anything, to go through there, as that group would not allow us to go through there, so that was not an option, this was our only route. I would like to make a small statement, if I can. This building has been our dream, it's a dream come true for us. We'd like our neighbors to know that we empathize with your desire for the lots to have stayed as undeveloped land, but we purchased the parcels well over ten years ago, they were already a zoned industrial. Zoned industrial, exactly the same way as the industrial building that already exists next door to their residential site. We have tried to be good neighbors and recognize that the building process has sometimes been loud, sometimes messy, and sometimes plain annoying. We have been cognizant that we were building in a mixed zoned neighborhood with an awareness of the impact on you, our residential neighbors. We want you to know that we have made purposeful adjustments in placing our delivery areas at the back of the building so that the noise is directed towards the industrial complexes that are there, not towards your homes. We have added sidewalks, we've lowered the parking lot lights to avoid too much light in the night sky. This long and lengthy build is now complete, and we would like to assure the neighborhood that we will continue to be good neighbors, and we will continue to listen to your concerns. We welcome the opportunity to meet with you and share the details of our operation to lay your fears and answer any questions that the neighborhood may have about it. Through communication, we will find harmony. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a couple questions.
Thank you for your willingness, we've got a question from Supervisor Holmes.
So how many employees do you employ now?
We currently have a hundred and thirty-five.
Oh, okay, and you're going to hire, be able to hire more people to?
We are very excited, we are a hundred and thirty-five in a very tight, tight niche. We will be employing more people, we have room for expansion, we pay good wages, high skill, we provide benefits, a hundred percent health benefits for our employees of premium plans, we have retirements and profit sharing, we believe our people are the best things we have, we can own more equipment, but people are the best asset. Years ago, we won an award from this county for being one of the best employers, and we strive day in and day out to be that type of an employer. We're a family business, I've got my, my three brothers and myself in two family businesses, it's, it's, we've been in business for forty-one and fifty-one years, and we continue to.
Okay, great. Two more questions. Will the employee parking be on-site, or it won't be on Pear, Pear Drive?
It will not be on Pear Drive.
Okay.
It'll be on Pear, I mean.
Precision Place.
Precision Place, and it will also be, overflow will be on to our existing buildings which are adjacent.
Okay.
So it will, it will overflow back into our other properties.
And final, final question, and I know what you do out there, but as a head of the board, can you tell us what you manufacture, what your business is?
We manufacture precision aerospace components. Little-known fact about our company, we've been around for a long time, actually very big players in the global aerospace industry. Every seven thirty-seven, forty-seven, fifty-seven aircraft flying is flying of Vian Enterprises' designed and built pub.
A three fifty, S thirty-five.
All kinds of planes. And it's right here in Auburn, and we just have always stayed right under the radar, doing our thing, just working. The reason we're asking for a name change is simply, when we present ourselves to the world, we want to present ourselves as the Precision Place, not necessarily Pear Lane. It doesn't quite fit our business, so it's just, we're shooting for the stars, hoping for your support, helping us have our dreams come true.
And these are skilled employees and?
Very much so.
Highly paid.
Very much so.
All right.
Not only are they skilled, they, they, they don't start out skilled, we train.
Yeah.
We bring these people up straight from, from the kid who was a box boy, and we put them to work and we train them to be machinists, we train them to be different types, assemblers, you know, we give them skills, we give them opportunities.
Okay, thank you, that concludes my questions.
All right, any other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Good morning, my name is Lee Matthews, I own the property directly across from Pear Drive on Kemper Road, I was born and raised there, and I've seen a lot of change on Kemper Road in the last almost sixty years. My parents bought that property in the early fifties. I knew the Feninis, and I watched them work their pear orchard for years, and it saddens me to see that name go away, I feel like it's part of our agriculture heritage in Placer County. So I guess I kind of feel like Mr. Holmes does, it just saddens me to see, see that little green sign across the road go away, it says Pear Drive, it's about the only thing remains down there that was original. That's really about all I have to say, I just, it saddens me to see the name change.
I remember your parents.
Thank you.
As well.
That's about it, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Anyone else? I will close public comment, and just a thank you to you folks for building the business here in Placer County and providing great jobs, it, it shows a lot about who you are, and then your willingness to work with our community members, the neighbors, we appreciate you being a good neighbor. Let's see, Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, Karen, I just want to let you know that I was raised right on Highway forty-nine, I mean, our home was right there, and the highway kept getting closer and closer to our house, just so you'll know, so I know what it's like. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion, finding, make a finding of exemption pursuant to SECA Guidelines Section fifteen oh six one B three and three, adopt a resolution authorizing the Deputy Director of Engineering and Surveying to assign the road name Precision Place. Thank you.
I would second that, I had one comment I didn't get in before, and that is, I do really appreciate the neighbors' commentary and willingness to work on both sides, and would urge us to take a look at this issue of speed and vehicles. There's no doubt, no matter how great we train our employees or our neighbors, people tend to go too fast at times, so if there's other options we have on the county road, I'd encourage our staff to look at that.
I would agree, I think we have some consensus there.
Yes, only because I'm really not hearing very well, that was a motion in favor.
Yes.
And then a second vice, Supervisor Augustus.
To be clear, what I was voting.
All right, and so we will have a roll call vote.
I have one more comment.
Oh wait, one more comment from Supervisor Holmes.
Karen and Karen, and the people that live in that area, please feel free to call me. I would plan to work with the Vians. They've contacted me. They've been in contact with me for this issue. So anytime you have an issue that needs some kind of attention, please feel free to contact me. Thank you. I know you will.
All right. Now we'll do a roll call vote. Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Gore?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to our 9:45 timed item and this is the discussion about accessory and junior accessory dwelling unit fees.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Claudia Wade, representing the Community Development Resource Agency. Today, we're asking the board to take the following actions. Consider adoption of a resolution establishing a fee schedule for accessory and junior accessory dwelling unit fees. Consider adoption of an ordinance to amend Placer County Code, Chapter 15, Articles 15.04, 28, 30, 34, 36, and 65 to conform to the new housing legislation. So a little bit of a background, in October of 2019, Governor Newsom signed several bills to remove the barriers to build accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as secondary dwelling, granny flat, and also junior accessory dwelling units. A junior accessory dwelling unit is 500 square feet or less. The new legislation went into effect on January 1st. So in December, we already had people lined up waiting for this legislation to go into effect, to pull their building permits. It basically modifies government code, section 64852.2, which now exempts junior accessory dwelling units and accessory dwelling units that are less than 750 square feet from impact fees and Quimby Act fees. For accessory dwelling units 750 square feet and larger, they must be charged proportional, it's quote, "charged proportionately in relation to the square footage of the primary dwelling unit." The new law does not alter connection fees or capacity charges for utilities, including water and sewer, unless the accessory dwelling unit is constructed with a new single-family dwelling. The qualifying Placer County impact fees include traffic impact fees, park and rec fees, capital facility impact fees, Placer County Fire Facilities Impact Fee, and the Rio of Vineyard Specific Plan Fee Program. Attached to the staff report are the resolution ordinance and the accessory and junior dwelling unit fee methodology. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Great. Thank you. I don't see other questions from my colleagues. I do have one quick question. So a junior accessory dwelling unit would be sort of like converting a garage, correct?
It would be within the footprint of the dwelling.
So that typically would be a garage.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Bonnie, I did have a question. I was asked earlier today about the cumulative, what the fees would have been for such units prior to this. My understanding is approximately $10,000 we'd be waiving. Is that?
I believe it depends on where you're at.
Right.
In the area.
But in general, if I just look at the couple of examples you have, it's about $10,000, which is the answer Supervisor Holmes gave me in the meeting, but I assume I'm.
So I don't have any examples. I mean, there's quite a few fees there. I would need to run the numbers, but it just depends on the zone.
Yeah. That was a question a constituent asked earlier. So what is the magnitude of fees you're waiving? And so for those under 750 feet, they would have been charged the full fee for all of those issues and it could have been in the range of 10 to 15,000 maybe. Does that sound right?
And we see a thumbs up in the back from staff.
Okay, there's Shawna. Okay.
Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you, Shawna. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We'll open this up to the public. Any comments from the public?
Thank you. It's a public hearing.
And this is a public hearing. I have to say that on the record. All right. And no comments, we will close the public hearing. And we've already actually had staff read the motions. So do I have an affirmation of the motion from one of my colleagues?
Move approval.
Move approval from Supervisor Holmes and second by Supervisor Wygant. And we'll do a roll call, please. Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Gore?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Well, let's see how many people start pulling permits, all right? And maybe we'll get some more affordable housing in our communities. With that, we will move on to our 9:55 timed item. This is Public Works and it's an annexation to County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 173, Dry Creek.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members. My name is Jared Deck. I am the Program Manager for Environmental Engineering. With me, I have Sarah Gilmore, who's going to do the presentation. She was newly promoted to the Senior Engineer in our Land Development Section. So in that, I will turn it over to her.
Thank you, Jared. Well, good morning. Again, my name is Sarah Gilmore and I'm here on behalf of the Environmental Engineering Division to present this Morgan Knowles annexation. As stated in your board memo, we're requesting the board to open a public hearing to adopt the resolution which is included in your staff report. This is to annex the Morgan Knowles property into the boundaries of County Service Area 28 in the Zone of Benefit 173, Dry Creek. Morgan Knowles is located in the northeast intersection of Willerga Road and PFE in the Dry Creek area and this development is consistent with the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan Land Use zoning. The current annexation fee for reimbursement to the Dry Creek West Placer CFD Number One is $2,723 per EDU or equivalent dwelling unit. The proposed subdivision is for 61 lots, which would total a payment of $166,103. Staff supports this request and in order to move forward, we request that your board open the public hearing and adopt the resolution in the staff report to annex this property into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 173, Dry Creek. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Looks like we have no questions from the board. We will open the public hearing. Any comments from the public? We will close the public hearing. And I heard the motion already stated by staff, so if somebody wants to affirm the motion.
Move approval.
Move approval by Supervisor Holmes and second by Supervisor Wygant. Roll call, please. Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Gore?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We'll move on to item 7A and this is the French Meadows Forest Restoration Project 2019 Operations Update and 2020 Supplemental Project Agreement with the U.S. Forest Service Tahoe National Forest. And they are running to get him as he comes and makes his way. That's just fine. Look at that. We moved quickly, Mr. Story.
Mr. Story?
Come on. It's 20 minutes past 10.
Sorry. Apologize. I was speaking with the Forest Service representative on this project. Brett Story, Department of Public Works, happy to be before you today. Wanted to give you a relatively quick update, but I want to take a little bit of time to tell you what we've performed in the French Meadows operations and then ask for your approval for the board chair to sign the next step, which is the 2020 operations. So a little bit about the project, our relationship. It's a combined U.S. Forest Service Placer County partnership. Your board approved a master stewardship agreement with the Tahoe National Forest in 2018. Your board approved a supplemental project agreement with the same Tahoe National Forest also in 2018. And with that came approximately $2 million from the United States Forest Service to help with that project. Your board also approved what's known as an SPA modification number one. And this is all their terminology. I didn't invent this. And that was to perform operations on federal land in 2019. Your board, and I thank you for your patience, approved multiple contracts last year. It's just the way procurement goes when you're dealing with this type of work. And then we're going to give you today's update and then a request that you approve the modification for 2020. Most of you know where the project is. I've tried to bring you all, some I still need to bring up there. It's a part of the Middle Fork American Watershed and it surrounds our Middle Fork project operations, the French Meadows Reservoir, outside of Forest Hill, a couple-hour drive. You can make it less, but you kind of get a little sick going faster. A little bit about the project. It's 22,000 acres of National Forest Service land at the very top of that watershed. It's a partnership including Placer County, Placer County Water Agency, United States Forest Service, the Nature Conservancy, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, and UC Merced is actually going to be performing some water, quantity, water quality work on that to help us study the effects of the changing way the snow falls and rain falls in our watershed. It's approximately four years of on-the-ground mechanical and handwork via our master stewardship agreement. And then the Tahoe National Forest is also going to do several more years of prescribed fire. So it's a combined effort to treat the land so that it'll be no longer a high risk for catastrophic fire. We remove and utilize timber and biomass off the project. I'll have a few details about that. And it also supports another 10,000 acres of private land in that checkerboard space that the Forest Service is always in and operations are going on there. So we're actually going to have 32,000 acres covered by the end of this project, which is a large chunk at the top of our watershed. That map, I know it's hard to see, but basically anything you see with thatches and stripes and colors, I'm colorblind, so I can't really tell you what's on that map. But realistically, we tried to do about 2,000 acres and due to a late winter, wet ground and some other complications, we were only able to get about 1,066 acres. We had over 3 million board feet of timber which was taken off the land and sold to Sierra Pacific Industries. We had over 4,000 green tons of biomass also taken, chipped, hauled to two different facilities, one Rio Bravo Rockland and one American, can't think of their name now, but in Loyleton. We had over 80 local contractors working on this project. I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. And then we had a large amount of project layout, tree marking and road engineering work by another 10 local contractors to support this project. So we're shopping Placer when we do all this. The project itself, the expenditures were approximately $3.6 million for the treatments. And I'd like to thank Lacy Friedman and Michelle Darling for the county. They have, they continue to correct and make sure I do everything correctly in your behalf. And there's a lot of billing, there's a lot of coordinating, and there's a lot of budget work that goes on in there and I am internally grateful to them to support me. On the funding source, of course, we had $3.6 million and what you see is a breakout. We were able to bill 1.715 to the Cal Fire Grant, which we won, 650,000 to the Sierra Nevada Conservancy Grant, which we also won. We had more timber revenues, but I can't spend them until they actually come in. It's one of the rules we have here in the county. But I was able to spend about 410,000 of those revenues. We also billed the Forest Service out of that $2 million I talked about. There was a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Grant, which we billed. There were some private beverage companies, which we also received money from and billed for them. And then there was a small amount of Middle Fork funding that also went towards this project for this year. The fun stuff, over 440 acres of mechanical thinning and hazard treatment removal, i.e. timber that was needed to be taken out to thin the forest and for safety reasons. One of our local contractors, Robinson Enterprises, did a fantastic job. They pulled about 3 million board feet. That was over $1 million in revenue. And so some of the numbers we have, for example, after all the forest treatments, I've got to get my glasses on, we, it was about $1,382 per acre if you factor everything in that was done on the forest minus the road work. We had hoped it would be somewhere about 1,100, but one of the couple of items, costs are going up to do this work. And we did some of the tougher, more expensive work this year, which was around the campground. So hopefully, over time, that number won't rise. It will stay there or go lower, but we're expecting that it could rise a little bit. So that's some of those, where hauling off the logs and then, of course, you see the forest, you can actually see through the forest now. And it's going to be much more healthy. It's going to be much better for water supply and all of the animals. On the mastication side, which is essentially just grinding the brush up and spreading it around, we did over 300 acres, again, a local company, Volcano Creek Enterprises, did a fantastic job. Much of this is an area that's on a side of a hill where it's harder to get equipment in and cut trees. It's also in the area that the star fire burned and the Forest Service replanted and those trees are struggling because all the brush has grown back and those little trees don't get enough sunlight or resources. So one of the prescriptions or treatments we have is to grind all that material, make it healthier for those trees, to get that solid foundation so it becomes a forest again. And that's important to us. On the hand thinning and chipping side, we had another contractor, Red Mountain Enterprises Resources, and we also used the California Conservation Corps on a joint agreement where they, this year, they actually came and didn't charge us any money and next year, it's going to be a 50-50 split. And so I'm very happy with that, not only using state workers, but that relationship that we have with the state, they're continually trying to find ways to help us clean up our forest. And so you see some of the work that's being done there. And then we had over 100 acres on the recreational campground thinning and Tree MD, another local contractor, did that work and has done a great job. If you have not been to French Meadows in years, you will come and it will look great. On the Middle Fork side, we're actually going to be rebuilding one of those campgrounds completely. So this work that was done on this project actually will save us money on the Middle Fork re-licensing side because we would have had to spend all that money on that side. So it's a great partnership and we're trying to save money and do much better for the environment. And over 4,000 acres have been planned and marked by another local contractor, Mason Bruce &amp; Gerard. In fact, I have Robert Galiano here, our forester here. If you have any technical questions, he can help me or answer directly. And then next year, or this year, I guess it is, 2020, and that's why we're also here today, is to ask for your approval of that. It's the operations. And we've done a lot of work right around the lake where all the ignition points usually are, i.e. humans. And now we're going to be, again, working our way out. This year, we've got even larger, more aggressive planning going. We hope to treat over 3,800 acres and we intend to finish those acres that we had last year that we weren't able to get done. We also are looking at some reforestation acres, a little bit, 100 acres was burned due to the King Fire and we're going to prep that work and plant those trees this year and next year. So we want to make sure that comes back to forest. And we're also, I talked about the UC Merced Water Study. We are actually treating those areas of the forest and that will be a combination of different types of forest treatment and no treatment so that they can gather data on how the snow falls, how the water runs off into the reservoir and what the quality of that water is. We've seen changing weather patterns and so we're getting snow at different times and we want to make sure that the residents of Placer County, as well as the Delta and everyone else in the state that uses our water, that we can still capture and maintain the high-quality water and amount of water that we have. So it's, we feel like that's an important part of why we're doing this. We expect three times the amount of board feet, 9 million board feet of lumber, again, taking it to Sierra Pacific Industries in Lincoln and Oroville, depending on the size of the log. And we expect over 15,000 green tons of biomass to be chipped, hauled, and used for energy production from this year's operations. Expenditures go up when you do more work, right? So we expect around $6 million to spend this year. Funding sources for that, we're getting a much greater amount from timber revenues, but we still have money from the Cal Fire Grant. We have money from the Middle Fork coming. We have still money from the Forest Service. We still have money left on the Sierra Nevada Conservancy Grant. The biomass revenues will go up as well as we know we have a small amount coming from beverage companies, but I got off the phone yesterday, our partner, the Nature Conservancy, actually has two more potential, so we could go from 47,500 to about 400,000 from those beverage companies this year. So we're always looking for donations, so, you know, I won't ask you for your wallets, but we're always looking to have other partners, new partners join because we feel it's important that as many organizations that can, understand and participate in forest management should and I think want to, and that's the real key to some of our partnerships. So I'm here today to request the approval of this modification number three to the approved SPA with the U.S. Forest Service via the Tahoe National Forest so that we can go conduct the proposed 2020 work for the French Meadows Restoration Project and also be remiss without the help of Brett Wood and Bob Bigney in procurement and Rob Sandman in the County Council's office for helping shepherd all of these things through. We're actually, the moment you vote yes, hopefully you will, we will be moving forward and we'll be back to your board with a bidding process on those contracts for this year. And happy to take any questions. And one note, I included a picture of Robert and I walking in the woods because I wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to not always spend my time with attorneys and procurement and meetings and financial people. Once in a while, I get to go out in the woods. Once in a while, I get to go out in the woods, and as far as I'm concerned, it's like, like having a job at summer camp, when the days that I'm out there. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for bringing him back.
Are you sure?
You're one of the few.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Wigan, questions, comments?
Yeah, a couple of questions, thanks. I'm curious a little bit more about the Merced Water Quality Study. So as you know, there's a huge amount of energy and quite a few folks who will argue that a treated forest does much better as it relates to groundwater quality and quantity. So is their study going to be more around changes in weather patterns, or is it going to give us a good baseline for improved water quality, quantity as a result of forest management, or both, or?
It's really about, I mean, it's not a study about changing climate or conditions. Essentially what it is, is, and they're doing this not just on our project, but several up and down the Sierra, northern and southern. The idea is, we already know we're getting precipitation differently at different times. What we don't know is, based on treatments, how will that affect? And so we're sort of given, we're not getting as much snow as we used to, or it's coming at a different time, we're getting warmer storms that wash it off. What they're trying to do is understand, we've got several different types of forest treatments that we're doing in that area, and then some areas where we're doing nothing. And so they've got gauges in the ground, they've got gauges in the stream bed, they've got gauges in the reservoir. And so what they're trying to do is track all of that, and then they can hopefully decipher within a reasonable amount of time what that means. So if we treated a forest in a certain way, and we're seeing better water, more water from that type of treatment, that will let us know we should be treating the forest that way versus the other way, or no way, right? No way is not probably going to be healthy for anybody, but that's really what we're trying to find out from them.
Thanks, yeah. And as you know, the folks like Sierra Business Council, but others are, you know, they're trying to make linkage down in the capital for a lot of the legislatures who obviously in California mostly represent urban areas.
Correct.
Don't have this inherent connection between the water that they drink or the air that they're breathing.
Comes out of the faucet, doesn't it? Yeah, yeah. And, you know, we've been talking with those same legislatures about this type of project. And some of our, Brian Dolly, for example, takes, he actually flies people from Los Angeles up to these projects as a personal expense to show them, this is really where your water comes from. And I think, again, more people that know about it, more groups that participate, see the value in it, they will then, hopefully, one day, we will be able to treat the forest correctly.
And in terms, do you know what the split is between the material that's going to Rio Bravo versus Loyleton?
Yes, and I will say that we took, we probably took three-quarters of the material to Rio Bravo. Some of the reasons for moving it were, for example, when we started going to Loyleton, Loyleton had contacted me, they were out of material, needed material. Rio Bravo was actually closing down for a week or two for operations, so it was actually the perfect time to switch and send it up there. But then at some point, the ice and snow on the roads to Loyleton became dangerous, and so they stopped and went right back to Rio Bravo. We're looking at, hopefully, I mean, I have a conversation today with both of them. Hopefully, we're going to look at those dual paths for, again, those types of reasons to make sure operations, there are problems, there, right, it's longer to go to Loyleton, but it takes more time to go to Rio Bravo because of their operations are, believe it or not, older and not as efficient. And so we look at every year, in fact, we had a meeting yesterday with our contractor and our forester to walk through what would make more sense for us. Loyleton pays more than Rio Bravo does. So there's a lot of factors as to why. In general, though, biomass is hard to move. And so anybody that's willing to accept it, that's a reasonable economic move for us, we're going to pursue.
Okay, yeah, thanks. And then last, you said this year, your target is treating 3,800 acres, and so does that include, was there about 900 acres that we fell short this year, and so is the 3,800?
Yes, it is a total, it's actually, it's actually closer to 4,000, but I try to be conservative when I present to you what my expectations are. I'm hoping to get around 3,000 acres. Again, we don't know how much the winter is, we can't go on certain land in the Forest Service until the soil scientist tells us it's okay to put equipment on there. So we just never know when we're going to start. At best, we have six months. At worst, we have four months of work. So it's kind of hard to gauge how many thousand, I mean, this is at 5,200 to 7,100 feet.
But that target includes the 90s.
It does, yes.
Thanks.
Supervisor Augustin.
Thanks, Brett. I really appreciate the partnership and the funding and all the work that's going on in our forest. And this is just, we're the tip of the iceberg, right? When we look at what surrounds our foothills.
It's the root of the conifer.
Oh, thank you, you've got a better analogy. On the biomass question, I think the more we can sustain as many other industries as possible and keep that infrastructure and supply, I know Loyleton has struggled with the investment, they're trying to keep that facility going. So whatever we can do to help both have a sustainable product delivery, I think that's great.
And you should know, Department of Public Works from both of our places take material to both, well, we don't take it up the hill, but we take from Eastern Regional to both places as well.
And so trying to keep, keep that infrastructure there to serve our needs long-term, because that's a lot of the issues, obviously, we've heard. And I just, I really love all the work that UC Merced has done, because really, it changed the dynamic for all of us to understand the impacts to water and tying that to forest health. Has really generated a lot of the funding and opportunities for funding from the water agencies as well to understand how important that is. So I really applaud the efforts they're doing now, continuing to research those issues and understand better those practices. So thank you.
And I actually have a representative from the Forest Service here, if you have any questions, or I'd like to hear him speak, but I'll answer any more questions you might have.
All right, looks like there are no questions. We can open that, this up to the public. If there are any comments from the public, anybody from the Forest Service wants to say anything, you are welcome to. Yes, sir, please, feel free.
Good morning. My name is David Fournier, and I'm the Natural Resource Staff Officer on the Tahoe National Forest. I moved here recently, about four years ago, from the Lake Tahoe Basin, where I worked with Brett, and we established essentially what's now the Tahoe Fire and Fuels Team. So a big partnership, actually Supervisor Augustin, I think he might have had a hand in that as well. And the county was very supportive. Of course, one of the former supervisors now on the state task force. So I am here really just to echo what Supervisor Augustin just said. In my head, I think back on the work that would not have happened without the partnership. And sometimes we have one-off partners, like we just have an agreement with one partner. This is a partnership with many involved, and at local, regional, state level, and federal level. And recently, our forest supervisor, Ali Alano, had his performance with our regional forester in Vallejo. The regional forester, before they got started, said, you know, I just want to share something with my performance in Washington, DC with the chief. Top on the list was the collaboration and the work on French Meadow. And the chief had mentioned that that was part of her performance evaluation as well. So people are seeing the work that we're doing together here, and it matters. And like I said, it wouldn't happen otherwise. This was on our program of work, looking out 10 years, but instead of 10 years from now, is we're able to do this now. And so I really want to applaud the efforts of the board and the staff, and it's a great partnership. We're each looking at some lessons learned that we can share, among other partnerships and collaboratives, that are doing, trying to emulate what we've started here. And really, it is the first that the Tahoe is engaged in at this level. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it very much. All right, no questions from the board, any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and I've already heard the motion read, so.
Move approval.
Thank you, we have a motion by Supervisor Augustin, second from Supervisor Holmes. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Go forth, spend more money, and improve the health of our forests. Appreciate it. All right, move on to item 8A, and this is as-needed asphalt paving and patching services.
Good morning, Supervisors.
Good morning.
My name is Brett Wood, I'm your purchasing manager. I'm here today to ask your approval to approve the award of competitive bid number 20044 to Baldoni Construction, Inc. of Newcastle, to provide as-needed asphalt paving and patching services in the maximum amount of $900,000 for the period of January 14th of this year through December 31st of this year. At this time, we're also requesting your board's approval of the opportunity, or the option to renew this contract for two additional one-year periods in the amount of $900,000 with the addition of change order authority and the amount of $90,000 consistent with the Placer County procurement policy. We're asking your board's authority to, or your board to delegate to me the authority to sign all the required documents for that. As a matter of background for you, we, as a county, need a vendor to provide asphalt paving and patching services on an as-needed basis for roadway, roadway patching, as well as sewer and manhole repairs, bicycle paths, driveways, parking lot paving and patching, and just in general miscellaneous patching services. So these are small projects that are done. We collaborated, the Procurement Services Division collaborated, collaborated with the Parks Division, Engineering and Environmental Utilities, the roadway division, as well as the facilities management team, to develop the requirements and specifications for this bid. When we posted it, it went out to over 200 firms, it was reviewed by nine, and we received valid responses from three different firms, two of whom were located within Placer County. We received no protest with this, therefore, we are recommending this award to your board, and we're happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Looks like no questions from board members. We'll open this up to the public. Any comments from the public? We'll close public comment, and since we already had Mr. Wood read the motion, do we have somebody to make the motion? Or the action?
Madam Chair, first of all, I'm going to make the motion, but I want to thank you for, it's a District III contractor in Newcastle, Baldoni, a longtime contractor in Placer County, so I'm pleased that their firm has been chosen, and I'll move approval.
And a second from Supervisor Augustin. Should be to do it, Robert. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to item 9A, Proposition 68 per capita grant program.
Good morning to our new Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Andy Fisher with the County Parks Division. And the action before you today is to request that you adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works or designee to conduct all negotiations, sign and submit all documents, including but not limited to applications, agreements, amendments, and payment requests which may be necessary for the completion of grant scopes under the Proposition 68 per capita grant program. To begin in June of 2018, in a statewide ballot, the voters of California passed the California Drought, Water, Parks, Climate, Coastal Protection, and Outdoor Access for All Act of 2018, known as Prop 68. And as the name implies, there were multiple programs funded under that grant, and the one before us today is concerned with the per capita program. Under that program, counties based on population are allocated a minimum of $400,000 each. Cities have their own allocations, as well as districts. These are non-competitive funds. This is the first time we've seen a per capita allotment in a bond fund since the early 2000s. So it's, it's welcome to us to have a non-competitive options here with some grant funding. The projects must be directed, they must be recreation projects, they may not be maintenance or ongoing operations, that's true of most grant programs. And there may be multiple projects awarded under the per capita program. This resolution before you is the first formal step, and it vests the authority in the Department of Public Works for all subsequent steps. And the sequence of this grant program is a little different than most. In most cases, you'd have a well-defined grant application in front of you at the time that you pass this authorizing resolution. In this case, the state is a little bit behind on their, their getting out the allocations to us. So they are not prepared to accept applications yet. That'll be forthcoming, but they have encouraged us to get these resolutions in, and we don't want to jeopardize any of our opportunity for this funding. So while we don't have our developed applications, we did engage the Park Commission, so we did want to identify good projects to be funded under this grant program and give you an idea of the thoughts. So with the input of the Parks Commission, we looked at projects that would meet different criteria. One, that they would meet the program criteria, that they're projects that could be completed during the performance period, which in practicality means built in or before the 2021 construction season. A project that's not easily funded through alternative sources, for example, some of the other programs within Prop 68 are targeted toward parks and, or trails and open space. We looked more at traditional in-park amenities with this program that are hard to get funds for from other sources. And we looked at projects consistent with the general plan standards and our draft park and trail master plan, while that is in draft form, and the capital improvement program is in draft form, we wanted to look at projects that at least had some advocacy behind them and some history behind them, and were waiting for some resource, and then projects that were matching funds were available, and projects that benefited health and safety. And so to that end, we would recommend that we pursue four different projects. One would be Dutch Flat Pool Improvements. That would be a new restroom. Right now, they have kind of an old rickety restroom up there, and we would be replacing that with a durable masonry unit with ADA accessible ramps. Right now, the old wooden unit just has stairs going up to it. The Dutch Flat Pool is the county's only facility that we maintain between Applegate and Squaw Valley, and it serves a lot of the west shore. So very important amenity, and since Colfax Pool closed a couple of years ago, a lot of folks from Colfax are going up to Dutch Flat now as well. So when we return with full applications and we're ready to go, we would recommend park dedication fees from the Colfax area to be used as matching funds there, 150,000 in program funds, and 30,000 in matching funds. The next would be Bear River Campground Potable Water System. Years ago, we treated water from the canal, and that's no longer permissible. So campers there no longer have access to potable water, and this would drill a well to potable water standards. Program funds of 175,000, with matching funds also from Area 3 Colfax Park Fees of 50,000. Griffith Quarry Park and Museum Improvement Project is a project we've been pursuing for quite a while to redo, really give the place a facelift with a new interpretive program, new safety fencing, signage, amenities all throughout the park, trail work and tree work, requesting 80,000 in program funds that would complete the total funding package of $306,000, and then finally be able to put the whole thing together and give Griffith Quarry a good facelift. And then finally, Sterling Point Equestrian Staging Area to build a permanent restroom down there, which now just has a portable restroom. That would be $25,000 in program funds, and we also have quite a bit of park dedication fees available in Area 10, the Granite Bay area, to augment that project. So those are the four projects that we're thinking of. With that, I would like to turn it back to the Chair.
Terrific, thank you very much. Supervisor Augustin, questions?
I appreciate all the work and the Parks Commission's work on this. I had one question in looking at the Bear River Campground. You do suggest there'll be a $7,000 operating in future years for the domestic water system there. And I know you were successful in raising the fees last year for the campground, which actually, I've heard a lot of good input, that it's changed the dynamics of who's using the facility and caring for that section of the river. So I would encourage us, it's not more a question, but an encouragement, that we continue to look at fees as helping drive, if we're going to now have a potable water source, that we consider that fee adjustment to help offset that operating cost.
Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Andy. I'm pleased that the Griffith Quarry Park Improvement is underway. And I'll make a lot of my constituents down in the Penneran area happy we've got several emails and a couple of phone calls about making sure that we adopted this. So thank you for your leadership on that.
Excellent, they've been very patient, it'll be a great project.
All right, any questions, comments from the public? All right, we'll bring it back, and we have a motion to approve from Supervisor Holmes, second by Supervisor Augustin, and I believe you already read the motion, right, Andy? Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. Wiegand?
Yeah.
Holmes?
Yes.
Yular?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Gore? Aye. Thank you, motion approved. And we'll move on to item 10A and that is the ordinance updating and standardizing the procedure for annual adjustments to impact fees. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning Chair Gore and members of the board, Matt Lebec, Management Analyst in the County Executive Office. Item for your consideration is introduce, introduce and waive oral reading of an ordinance amending Placer County Code related to the annual adjustments, a development impact fees for the countywide traffic mitigation fee, parks and recreational facilities fee, Riola Vineyard specific plan fee, and the parks and recreation facilities fee, otherwise known as Quimby Fee. The purpose of the ordinance is to consolidate the timing of the annual adjustments for all of these fees to July 1. The purpose is to true the adjustments with the start of the new fiscal year. Staff is also proposing to adjust the fire facilities impact fee to also take effect July 1, however, that can be accomplished administratively and does not require adoption of an ordinance. The ordinance does not propose a change to the way the fees are calculated nor a change to the amount of the fees. Additionally, staff is exploring an opportunity to consolidate the capital facilities impact fee, but that's going to require additional coordination with our partner cities that also charge the impact fee. Furthermore, there are several other impact fees the county charges in conjunction or under the purview of other jurisdictions and staff will continue to administer those fees and explore options for consolidation as well. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Matt, any question, no questions?
All right.
Oh, yes we do, Supervisor Holmes?
Thanks for bringing this forward Matt. Mr. Lebec, is that how we say your name?
Correct.
You may not, may or may not know that Matt is taking a position with an adjoining county and so we want to wish you well, hope you come back soon. But I want to make sure that you're finished with that Penske file before you leave, okay?
Absolutely. I appreciate the kind words, I'll get right on it.
All right, no other questions and we'll just open it up to the public? All right, no comments from the public and do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second by Supervisor Wiegand, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move into closed session, County Council?
The Board will now adjourn to closed session to consider seven items of existing litigation as noted in the agenda, to consider one item of conference with real property negotiators regarding the real property identified in the agenda. Will then have a conference with county labor negotiators. Will consider two items of public employment, the first being the recruitment appointment process for the district attorney, the second being performance evaluation for the county executive officer. The Board will adjourn as the Placer County Board and convene as the Placer County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority to consider one item of labor negotiations.
All right, thank you. And my anticipation is this probably will take us a good hour with all the items, just so that the public is aware and we will report out after closed session.
Hi. How's everyone?
You're going to announce a report of your district attorney?
What's that?
You're going to announce a report of you to the district attorney?
Oh, missed that. Ready?
All right.
The Board met in closed session to consider the following. Under existing litigation, in County versus Sorus Beragon, the Board heard a report and provided direction. Tal Residence United versus County, the Board heard a report and provided direction. Lull versus County of Placer, the Board heard a report and authorized defense of the named defendants. Taylor Sheets versus Jason Lippert, the Board heard a report and authorized defense of named defendants. Enray Carl Webb, the Board heard a report and authorized settlement. Enray Adam LaMoge, the Board heard a report and authorized settlement. Enray Linda Badistoney, the Board heard a report and authorized settlement. Under conference with real property negotiators, the Board heard a report and provided direction. In conference with labor negotiators, the Board heard a report and provided direction. Under Government Code 54957, public employment, the Board first considered the recruitment appointment process for the district attorney and directs the Department of Human Resources to post and advertise the district attorney vacancy for a period of 30 days. The Board further directs that said posting be performed as expeditiously as possible. The Board then conducted a performance evaluation for the county executive officer. The Board then adjourned as the public county board of supervisors and convened as the Placer County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority to have a conference with labor negotiators. The Board provided direction, the Board adjourned as the Placer County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority and reconvened as the public Placer County Board of Supervisors. This concludes, report out of closed session.
Great, thank you very much and it looks like we are finished with our meeting, so we will adjourn to our next regular meeting, which is on January 28th, 2020. Thank you everybody.